Call this meeting of the Westland City Council order begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Jim Godbout.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro Tem Londo.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampey.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. For special presentations and announcements, I welcome up Vic Barr in the Wayne Westland School District.
Greetings, Council, Mayor and residents. I'm Vic Barr, your Paco leading director and one of Mayor Wild's compassionate city team members. Joining me today is Amanda Dibas and Darrell Beebe from the Wayne Westland Community School District Administration to celebrate four of our students and acknowledge their random acts of kindness and contributions to a more compassionate city. At this point, I'll turn over the mic to Amanda and Darrell so they can invite up our students and supporters and tell you a little bit about them and why they're here today.
Amanda?
Thank you. So up first this evening from Edison Elementary, we have Jalon Lewis. Jalon, if you'd like to come up here with us. And who's here with you this evening?
My mom.
Your mom. We're also going to ask Bennett Tyler, principal of Edison Elementary, to come up as well. So Jalon's random act of kindness was that he found some money that didn't belong to him and he turned it in. I'm going to read to you some sentences about Jalon. "Jalon is a very responsible and respectful student. His act of kindness shows what great character Jalon has. He is an excellent role model for his classmates, both academically and socially." Can we give a round of applause to Jalon?
Thank you. So from Elliott Elementary, we have Mohammed Abari. Mohammed, are you here? Thank you for coming up. And who did you bring with you on tonight? Your mom and your dad? All right, cool. All right, and attending with us also is Aaron Darcy. You want to come up with us? Thank you. And so Mohammed was nominated by a classmate who said, "Mohammed helped me clean up a mess that I made. He also helped another student put away their Chromebook." And the school psychologist, Aaron Darcy, said, "Mohammed is a kind, compassionate, and hardworking student. He goes above and beyond classroom expectations to be safe, respectful, and responsible at Elliott Elementary School. He is always willing to volunteer his time and talents to help others. He even volunteered to help decorate the kindness box that is displayed in the front lobby. He is a wonderful role model." Let's give him a round of applause.
Up next, from Hicks Elementary, is Quincy Choice. Come on up, Quincy. Quincy, who's here with you this evening?
Your mom and dad.
Your mom and dad. Is your teacher, Ms. Schirmack, here as well? Come on up. And I believe, Ms. Schirmack, you were the one who nominated Quincy, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Quincy's random act of kindness was that he used kind words and complimented a classmate. His kindness made the classmate feel better. Quincy is a quiet and thoughtful student. He exhibits our motto of be responsible, be respectful, and be safe on a daily basis while interacting with teachers and students. He shows kindness to everyone he meets and is committed to doing his best every day, and Hicks hustles harder. Good job, Quincy.
Thank you. So our last student is from Hamilton Elementary School. We're going to ask Aiden Stanfield to come up. Come on in here. All right, and attending with Aiden on tonight is Lauren Wilson, our school social worker, Kelly Michaels, the principal, and Joseph Lane, the assistant principal. I'm sorry, Mr. Lane couldn't make it. So Aiden's act of kindness, it was November 30th during a snowy recess. A student was said that he didn't have winter boots. Recession is not just the same, he said. Aiden felt bad for his friend, so he instantly declared that he was going to get his classmates some boots. After collaborating with both students' mothers, Hamilton orchestrated a private exchange that left the student in need of boots speechless and their social worker in tears. Isn't that wonderful? So the schoolwork said, Lauren Wilson said, "This is just one of the many reasons why Aiden is a true leader and an amazing friend. He always uses his heart to problem solve and strives to make situations better for the good of everyone." That's Aiden Stanfield's going places. All right, let's give Aiden a round of applause.
Well, thank you, young compassionate students. What a wonderful example you have for all of us. Right now, I'd like to invite up Council President Jim Hart, Council Pro Tem Michael Londo, our city clerk, Richard LeBlanc, and Mayor Wild, of course, to come join us and line up with your respective students. They have something for you. All right, photographer, can you get us all lined up for a group photo, please? Parents and students, they'll take some additional photos out in the lobby. If you'd like to join our wonderful photographer, he'll do that and we'll get those photos to you. Thank you.
All right, we're just giving them a second to walk out. Up next, we have our Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson.
I have to admit, I pulled my mask off for a short time and looked around and I saw all these young people wearing a mask and I said, "I've got to do that myself," so we need to set examples for our kids, so I thought I better do my part. Just wanted to say to everyone greetings and just a quick update. Westland's, we're going to, the Westland portion of the Parks Grant from my discretionary allocation for Wayne County, from the Wayne County Village, has increased by almost $2,500 this year. It'll be $47,618 for '22, and I'm sure the mayor is already working on a project for that with Parks and Rec and look forward to seeing that come to fruition. Also, the commission, a few things that we've done just recently and actually some of them today. We approved a resolution in support of the 20,000 square foot expansion of Presbyterian Village. It was unanimous by everyone on the commission. I sponsored it and then everyone else was on the resolution as a supporter, too. Also, we approved funding for up to $700,000 for a repair slash repair or replacement of the Nankin Pedestrian Bridge at the north end of Farmington Road to reconnect to Heinz Park. As many of you know, it had fallen into disrepair and it had been shut down. So hopefully that'll be something pedestrians and bikers and folks that like to walk the trails will be able to use and access from the subdivision even just to the south. Also, one of the things I was going to mention is something that we've approved for additional COVID testing and vaccine sites, and I think the chief is going to send everyone details about that tomorrow. So I look forward to that being something that's beneficial to everyone. Also, State Rep Kevin Coleman and I will have our next coffee hour at the Westland Library next Monday, on the 14th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Library. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right, we'll move into questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized at the beginning of the business meeting to address the council items that are specifically on the agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? All right, we have no input on the consent, excuse me, on the agenda. We'll move to the consent calendar. Is a motion by Councilman Godbout? Support by Councilman Hersberg. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
I'd like to make a motion to move Item D to new business, Item 1A.
It's a motion to move Item D in consent calendar, new business, Item 1A. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Moving back to the consent calendar. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Is there any discussion? Excuse me, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no motion carried unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held January 18, 2022. Minutes of the study session held January 18, 2022. Minutes of the study session held January 24, 2022. Approval of bid award extension with Utility Finance Solutions LLC to provide professional services, including performing a water and sewer cost of service and rake design study for the city. Total cost not to exceed $24,500 and shall be valid for a term of three years. Approval of electronic faxing services agreement with Efax Corporate. Monthly cost not to exceed $446.60 with a month-to-month term. Approval of appliance lease renewal associated with the city's existing dark trace security device. Amount $2,306 per month for a 48-month term. Approval of professional consulting services agreement with Maximum, I'm sorry, Maximus Consulting Services Incorporated for a central cost allocation plan. The fee is not to exceed $40,000 for the 2021-2022 budget year in the agreement to commence immediately and expire December 31, 2023. Approval of agreement with the City of Westland and Wayne Westland Community Schools regarding the John Glenn High School Police Officer Liaison. The agreement shall be effective for a one-year period commencing immediately. Introduction to Budget Amendments through December 31, 2021, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared resolution recognizing Wayne Westland Foundation for the Improvement of Instruction as a local nonprofit organization operating in the City of Westland in order to obtain a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan. Moving to new business, Item 1. Request for a closed study session on February 22, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. to discuss the workers' compensation claim of S. Davidson and settlement strategy with council pursuant to the Open Meetings Act exemption, MCL 15.268.1E and H.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, Item 1A. Approval of bid for portable toilets. Administration recommends the low bidder reliable onsite services at the following rates. $75 each for standard units, $100 each for wheelchair-accessible units, and $190 each for units with sinks. The agreement shall be for a three-year period with the option to renew for an additional year. Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Londo. Any discussion from the maker supporter? Any discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick question on this because we brought this up this weekend at our ARPA study session, and I would have asked this sooner, but this came up just on Saturday. So through the chair to the administration, if this contract goes through and we end up deciding that with some of that ARPA money, this is just hypothetical, that we want to use it to potentially build out some public restrooms at some of our parks where we're currently using portable toilets, how would that affect this contract in that, you know, places that we may decide to potentially build out a public restroom at, we ultimately don't need those toilets anymore, so if we're essentially returning them to the vendor here, the contractor, would we get some kind of refund on that?
Through the chair, there are no minimums in the contract, so if, for instance, there were permanent restrooms placed at one of the parks, then we would not be billed for those porta potties, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Is there any other discussion? Discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, Item 2. Confirmation of reappointment of Ralph Cabildo to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire February 19, 2026.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Sampey. Is there any discussion? Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Council. Real quick, Mr. Cabildo is actually in the audience here tonight. He's a longtime Westland business owner. His business is in the Wayne Road Business District. He has been a member of the DDA Board since 2018. You probably also recognize him as he's been the voice of our Blues Brews and BBQ and over the years, and he's also did some workforce at shop and dine at the mall, him and his wife, so he's a great addition to the DDA and he's doing a good job, so we would appreciate his reappointment tonight.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cabildo, stand up, be recognized.
New business, Item 3. Confirmation of reappointment of Gretchen Heinecke to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a six-year term with the term to expire February 5, 2028.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Sampey. Mayor?
Thank you, Council. Ms. Heinecke's in the audience here tonight and you know her. She's the president of the Westland Chamber of Commerce. She's served on this board for us since March 2020. She's a Westland resident and she is doing a great job, and we've tried to, over the years, to have a representative from the Chamber of Commerce on this board, and she does a great job.
Thank you. And our discussion from the council.
I just wanted to say, Gretchen, thank you so much. As the newest councilwoman, you're so welcoming, and I know you do such a great job. You've included me in some of the events, and I always see you at events, so I just want to say, you know, you're doing a great job, and I see you out there, and I appreciate your smiling face every time I see you.
Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Gretchen, say hi to everybody.
New business, Item 4. Confirmation of reappointment of John Sullivan to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire February 5, 2026.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? All right, excuse me, Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Sullivan's in the audience here tonight. He's a Westland resident. He's an attorney. He stepped in to serve a partial term on the LDFA Board, and he's here before you tonight for a new four-year term, and he's been doing a great job, and we've put his wife to work, if you remember, on the Historical Commission Board, so they're both doing a great job, so we'd ask you to reappoint Mr. Sullivan tonight to the LDFA Board.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Sir?
New business, Item 5. Confirmation of reappointment of Robert Farsakean to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire February 5, 2026.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Londo. Mayor?
Thank you, Council. Mr. Farsakean is the current chairman of the LDFA Board, and he has served since 2002. He's one of our longest-serving commissioners in town, and he's doing an incredible job, so we'd ask you to consider his reappointment tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Farsakean could not be here today, but we do. Thank you, sir.
New business, Item 6. Request approval for transfer of membership interest for Class C liquor license for Casa Fiesta LLC 7667 North Wayne Road, a Michigan limited liability company.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor? Nothing to add? Okay. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, Item 7. Approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Sampey. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop all the speakers recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right?
Richard Graham from Westland, and with Move Westland Forward. Couple of items. It was sad and disheartening what happened to the residents on Gray Street regarding the law split that will forever change that neighborhood. So much for resident participation to review the life-changing event for that neighborhood. Not very compassionate. This is what is typical for Team Wild is that Joseph Eda, who owns the property, is a political campaign contributor to Hart, Wild, and Godbout. Common sense and forward thinking should have caused Mayor Wild, along with the planning director, to make sure the residents in the area knew in advance, along with sitting down with them, in advance. However, these things are seldom done based on political connections. Another neighborhood to be taken advantage of.
Sir, that's a personal attack. You're making accusations, and it won't be tolerated, sir.
They didn't give you money? Mr. Eda didn't give you campaign money?
Sir?
Yes or no?
You're making accusations about political favors.
It's not an accusation. It's Wayne County campaign finance. He gave you money.
Sure, it's public, but you're not going to make personal accusations. It's right here, and it's not going to be tolerated, sir.
You're not going to deny my freedom of speech. What is also interesting were Councilman Hart's comments about needing to vote yes because it supposedly meets all requirements, but in 2021, Councilman Hart denied a business on Wayne Ford Road the right to open. This cost the taxpayers thousands in legal fees. So, Mr. Hart, based on your past vote, you could have easily voted no, but Mr. Eda gave you campaign money. Regarding the Marshall Middle School and using $15 million, frankly, I was surprised by the low amount of money to spend on an old rundown and set to be demolished building. Reports are various, but many include the very sad state of the building and the massive overhaul that needs to be done. Other communities have a rec community center like Livonia, Farmington Hills, Romuson, Canton. Remember, Mayor Wild took away our rec center so many years ago to build City Hall. How about a sports dome as a possible option? How about solar panels and geothermal for heating and cooling? Council, don't settle for average. What is also surprising is the city would basically be a landlord, and our tenants are Wayne County, the library, and the Y. Same Y that closed in Livonia and also pulled out of Westland. $15 million for the citizens to become a landlord. I thought Wayne County occupied space in Jefferson Barnes. Now, Councilman Hart was... Now, Councilman Hart was quoted in saying that the city does not have the skill set for handling a recreation facility, yet cities like Livonia, Rhine-Bladus do. We have a made-up facilities director position and a very good parks and rec director. Councilman Hart, were you directing your comments to Mayor Wild and Deputy Mayor Reddy of not having the skill set to run a rec center? Now, Councilman Godbout, you stated that Mayor Wild deserves his salary and lavish increase that was approved last month, and you compared it to Livonia and Canton. But Council President Hart says that the city does not have the skill set to run a rec center. Why on earth should a mayor get a lavish pay and perks if the city cannot manage a rec center? No rec center, no pool, no curbside leak pickup, no recycling unless the tax increase, very limited amount of money.
Your time is up, sir.
You deny my freedom of speech.
You're being disruptive.
I will go over.
Your time is up.
Yep, and you deny my freedom of speech.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone else on my right? Right?
I wanted to say hello, everyone, and I know I missed the last city council, because when I'm not here, I know what's going on because I watch YouTube. So I keep up with stuff, and Mike, I see you with your updates too with the study session, and I, it's important to me with people with disabilities, that sidewalks that are, that curves that are cracked, that should, that's important, that that should be fixed and, you know, for people to get around in. And matter of fact, I haven't forgotten the fire department yet, but I'm planning getting with you in March with my schedule for the mental health and awareness, and I'm making up a list of the places that I want to be going to. And that is my passion too, so I'm a very busy guy here. I'm also with my church right now. Reach out with the people, I'm on the community with them right now, with people with disabilities, that everybody is welcome, and that's the way it should be. We're not in the 60s or 70s anymore. People are living a life, and they should be treated with dignity and respect everywhere they go. So, a matter of fact, and number four, I think, if I was riding along with the police, matter of fact, and I know what they go through, and it's really hard work. It's amazing when you ride in their car. I rode with them for four hours with the vest on. It was very interesting, pulling somebody over to computers to, it's amazing how they can track you down with this with your ID. It's really cool with this two new technologies that they do have. And he learned a lot about me, too. Talked about mental health, and they go through a lot of this right now during sedentary time right now with mental health. And so that's pretty much, then I also did a newsletter for Detroit, the authority, the DWIHN letter, that I did a story about me being on the, okay, I'm getting the certificate, and I have a picture of it. So I am real proud of it. I want to say thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes.
Good evening, Council. Lori Wilson, Art Warren, Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. I have a resolution that I hope, and I truly expect to have council feedback and for the mayor. Resolution to the Westland City Council requesting a pledge of support to the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association to be included in the Wayne Westland Community School District. Whereas the city has a rich history as serving as an underground railroad stop, and the area located in the southeast corner of what now is Westland has been identified in history as an area built for black veterans, and whereas the city council legislates under the Compassionate City Resolution, and whereas the city council approved the creation through ordinance its Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission in 2020, and whereas the city of Westland is committed to and accountable for advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in all of its forms, including public schools, and whereas historical restrictions were placed on African-Americans, including the practice of occupancy, to segregate housing in the Carver subdivision, and excluding residents from the larger community of Nankin Township, later to be known as Westland in the 1940s, and whereas the children historically and current have had to be educated in the former Inkster School District, and upon its dissolution, this dissolving was still not accepted into the Wayne Westland School District, but the area was divided once again into Romulus and Taylor Schools. These districts do not share the same educational values as seen in Westland Schools. And now therefore be it resolved that the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association is requesting the pledge of support in the form of a council resolution from the city council in our quest for inclusion into the Wayne Westland Community School District with all the rights of inclusion. Arthur K. Warren, Southeast Westland Homeowners Association President, and Lori E. Wilson, Recording Secretary, Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Good evening, Council. One point I want to make, based on something that was said, Commissioner Anderson, I know they just approved in the county, and I know you guys don't approve in county things, but just something I'm just going to share is, as COVID numbers go down, I'm hoping that there are equal things that we're not doing anymore. So it's just, I'm a little concerned that that got approved, and I know this is not you guys, but I just want to share that as a city, we think about COVID numbers are going down, and we do need to put some things, start putting things back in perspective with other illnesses that are actually going up, such as mental health, and we need to make sure we're putting perspectives and money in where we're doing that. So just as a city, as we, even though counties are doing things and states are doing things, I think we need to be part of that pushback. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I really enjoyed, welcomed being at some of the study sessions recently, and especially the one on Saturday. I will say that it got me realizing that I didn't know enough about how the money needs to be spent, some of the rules, some of the things about it. So I've, being a researcher, have been starting to get into that and understand a little bit more, which after going to it, has now given me some questions as to some of the things that were being proposed even at Saturday. So as someone who doesn't really know what the next stop, stop, next step in that process is, I'm hoping that this is something that you can actually be making sure that the community is very involved with, because obviously there weren't a lot of residents there, even as a representative of the number of people in the city. And so I think that there should be really nice opportunity that we, even in sight of the fact that there's an urgency to spend to some degree because it goes away, that we are very included in all those decisions to help with that, because it is something that, from what I do understand, it is supposed to help Westland become better in those areas. There's something about that that's supposed to, it's not supposed to be the ongoing, I think some comments were made on Saturday, that it can't create something that creates a more ongoing cost. It's got to be something that's still a bit self-contained, so I want to really be part of that. And one of the things, a phrase I came across today, which I thought was interesting, was who will guard the guardians, and I can't remember the guy's name that said it, but I thought that was something that, as residents, I just want to encourage our Westland residents to come to the city council meetings or to watch the city council meetings, because it is our job as the public, as the residents, to guard the guardians that we have elected in these offices, and make sure that we are doing some, you know, really good checks and balances, I guess, and make sure that we are in every area, sorry, oops, in every area of Westland actually getting those benefits. So that is my, thank you.
Hey, is anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
All right, thank you, City Council, for moving forward tonight on the reappointments that we have before you tonight. Thank you for taking a few minutes to let us recognize Jalon Lewis, Mohammed Akbari, Quincy Choice, and Aiden Stanfield for this month's compassionate city certificates and for the random acts of kindness that they were recognized for. Just a quick shout out to all of our hard-working DPW employees for their plowing and salting efforts during the recent snowfall. We are expecting a little bit more snow this week, so they're still out there doing cleanup work, so if there's some areas that need some attention, you can reach out to my office or the city council, they can share those with us. So they are out there still doing a little additional cleanup. Council, just two last things, as you know, there's been a lot of talk about the shortage of blood during the pandemic, so through our compassionate city program, we're going to be partnering with American Red Cross on Monday, February 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. right here at City Hall in the Gene McKenney Grand Ballroom for a blood drive. So if you'd like to reserve time for that, you can do so at redcrossblood.org, or you can call my office, and we can help you schedule a time. Then just the last thing is just a reminder, everybody, that Hockey Night in Westland's coming up Friday, February 18th at 7:00 p.m. Actually, the puck drops at 7:30 at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena. We're expecting a big turnout this year, and we should have the lineup of the Red Wings alumni players later this week. The tickets are $10 for adult, $5 for children ages 6 to 12. Children under 5 are free. This is an event that we do, this will actually be the 11th time we've done this event to raise funds for improvements there. So the doors open at 5:30. There's going to be lots of fun things to do, and then the puck drops at 7:30, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman Rakowski.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to extend my congratulations to the young people who got caught being kind. It's always wonderful to see that our younger generations really got it together, and they're compassionate for one another, and I think that's going to make for much brighter tomorrows as they become full citizens of age in our community, and I think they're all going to continue to do wonderful things. Additionally, I'd just like to congratulate and thank all of our reappointed board and commission members. We appreciate your service to the city, and I just wanted to say that, you know, this previous Saturday, we did start talking about our ARPA spending and what that's going to look like for the city, and I think it's the beginning of a much larger conversation to be had, and there's other dollars coming to the state through infrastructure bills, so I think there's going to be a really great opportunity for a lot of things to be getting addressed. I know a lot of people have expressed desire to have, you know, our water and sewer issues looked at, and I can feel for them, especially with all of the flooding of the last year. I mean, we certainly have some opportunities to remediate that and remedy that for those individuals. So other than that, I don't really have much to add, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott?
Well, good evening. Thank you. So got a lot on my plate tonight, so do apologize in advance. Would like to thank everybody who was reappointed to our board and commission members. But I would like to thank Ralph Cabildo, I would like to thank Gretchen Heinecke, John Sullivan, and Robert Farsakean for your service to the community. You know, we need people, good people like yourselves, to serve on our boards and commissions, and you help keep the city operating, so thank you for your service in our community and signing up to do this again. Thank you to all the kids, Jalon, Aiden, Quincy, and Mohammed for your compassionate acts of kindness, and to the Wayne Westland School District for acknowledging those kids and the compassionate efforts that they display each and every day here in our community, and it's a pleasure and a privilege to be able to sit up here and honor the kids and all the great work that they're doing and the compassion that they show here in the school system. I would like to acknowledge that this is February, and it is Black History Month, and Black History Month does not only apply to African-American and black individuals, it applies to all of us, and it is an opportunity for all of us to take some time to learn about things that we didn't know in regards to contributions from African-Americans and black people in our country. Many of you have, you know, a plastic water bottle up here, or you may have one in the audience. You drink pop every day, bottled water, you use plastics in your everyday life. Actually, the invention of plastics, it was heavily contributed to by a black individual, so whether it's, you know, that or a host of other things, I would, you know, hope that you take the time to use Black History Month to educate yourself on some of the many accomplishments that African-Americans and black Americans have contributed to, you know, our society. So, you know, Black History Month is something for all of us to celebrate. In regards to something that, you know, Ms. Baumann brought up, I'd like to just thank you for acknowledging mental health. We've been here going through this pandemic together with all kinds of mandates and things that have been, you know, forced on us, lockdowns, mandates, wearing masks, getting vaccinated, and it puts a big stress on people's mental health, and so, you know, complying with all that and being responsible citizens can be sometimes really taxing, especially when you've been cooped up in your home, or, you know, kids have been cooped up with virtual learning and not in the classroom with their friends. So thank you for acknowledging that, and I think we need to go a step above that and really put some resources into doing something about mental health in our state and really transforming mental health here in the state of Michigan to take care of people. So I appreciate you bringing that point up. I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments in regards to this week's meeting, this weekend's meeting, excuse me, on the ARPA funds. It was really a professional and productive meeting, and it was nice to have that, where we all got to contribute our ideas, we got to hear great ideas from people in the community, what they liked, but also, you know, what they didn't like and what they may have disagreed with. So thank you to the team at Plant Moran, thank you to the administration and the mayor, and all my colleagues for running a really professional and productive meeting. We've got a lot of ideas that came out of that meeting that we're going to be, you know, kicking around, things that you've given us feedback on and things that we all presented. So that was step one of many steps as far as how we want to potentially allocate that money and those resources to improve our community. It was brought up today in regards to, you know, Marshall. That is something that certainly we're looking at as a portion of that ARPA money. I don't think that we're going to be, I certainly hope we're not going to be dropping 15 million of ARPA money in there, and I think we all anticipate that that is not going to be the case, you know. The other alternative to Marshall is to looking to, you know, do a ground-up facility, so that's something that, do we take a look at? I don't know, but we're going to have further debate on both the ARPA money and the Marshall thing, and ultimately, what if any dollars we want to allocate towards that. But again, want to just thank my colleagues for a really wonderful study session this past weekend on that. I want to echo the mayor's sentiments and thank our DPS crew for, you know, busting hump all week last week, getting neighborhoods plowed and salted. You know, we all sit there and, you know, get to see the plow truck come by, but, you know, many of these men and women are working overtime and really working double shifts to make sure that we're getting it plowed and salted, and I know, you know, in my neighborhood, they're not just coming by one time, they're coming by two and three times. So that, it takes a lot of work, so thank you to our DPS crew for coming by and really, you know, working hard. Thank you to Commissioner Anderson for the update on the pedestrian bridge. I know we've had, you know, a couple of residents ask a number of us about that frequently, so it's nice to have that update on the Nankin Pedestrian Bridge going into Heinz Park there as well. And let me see, I think that is just about everything I have tonight, so with that, I bid you all a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe?
You're definitely going out of order this evening. Well, first off, I'd like to welcome everyone to February, and I know that Councilman McDermott brought this up, but yes, Black History, I wanted to share something, which it is. It's a time to, you know, spread awareness and continuing to support the black community in the histories and traditions and cultures. So Frederica Baker, I'll hold this up, she actually sent this to me and my husband. It's a beautiful collage of just African-American leaders in a shirt, and I wanted to share this because she's an entrepreneur living locally, and she sent this to my husband and I, and she has a business, so wanted to share that. She can be reached at f baker 727 at Gmail. I mean, she does everything, but I just, my husband and I love our shirts, and we've been wearing it around this month, and we're going to continue to do so. Also, February is American Heart Month, and today I'm wearing red, as you can see, especially in honor of my mom, and she is in the audience this evening. In June, she had a planned heart valve surgery, and due to complications, she was on a ventilator for almost two weeks, and we actually almost lost her. So luckily, with great care from Henry Ford Hospital, she also did cardiac rehab, but we actually found the importance of taking care of your heart. So I just want to kind of share the story to remind you to know your numbers and visit your doctor, because this month is something that we can kind of remember, and one in three women will die from heart disease and stroke, which actually makes it the most deadly of all cancers combined. So I wanted to kind of bring that up as a reminder. So move So moving on, thank you to the administration and our council leadership for organizing a fabulous event on Saturday. I agree. It was really great, kind of in my first study session, to see all of us collaboratively talk about ideas. You know, I think we're not all going to agree, and I think funds like this and the large amount of money that we have, we can do many things, impactful things, too. And I think out on social media, there's been things that I've seen about us spending and what we're spending and what we're not spending. And Mayor Wild did say it a State of the City and outlined some key priorities about the road and the sidewalks and such, and addressing the water concerns and the sewer and the flooding. I think we all agree. I mean, I think every single one of us will sit up here and say, we all agree with those priorities. But I think we just don't know yet, because there's so many pieces that we have to put together that's a lot of money. So I think before jumping into accusations and saying, we're going to do this, 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 just to kind of debunk that and say, there's a lot of planning and a lot of behind-the-scenes things that people just don't understand, but be patient with us, because we are going to be doing our research. Every single one of us have talked, you know, about our needs and our wants. And Marshall may happen. It may not happen. We really don't know. I mean, we're not really sure what's going to happen. And there was a study session that took place on January 24th. And, you know, spending $15 million on a Racker Community Center is definitely not the reality. That's, that number has never, ever, ever come across my, you know, I'm going to say desk hypothetically, email. There's a lot of partners that we're going to engage, and, you know, absolutely, in my background, I would say that that's not realistic at all. So with that being said, I just wanted to kind of say, we are exploring partnerships, we're exploring nonprofits, we're learning a little bit more, but we really are going to make our due diligence and our responsibility for whatever this may be. So with that being said, I'll move on to some congratulations. Those that are in the audience this evening, so Ralph, Gretchen, John, and Robert, who's not here, congratulations on your appointments. And Jaleen, did I say that wrong? Not Jaleen, Jalon? Jalon, okay. Mohammed, Quincy, and Aiden. I know last time we had a girls' club, so now we have a boys' club. So congratulations, you know, to those four young men who set great examples. It was really great to see them up here. And as a mom of a boy, boys definitely can be rambunctious, but every single one of them had such a great heart. So it was good to see them up here, and, you know, congratulations again. And Ray, for all you're doing in the community, you know, I had something written last time, and you weren't here. So thank you for always sharing your update. I always look forward to it. It was really great. Yeah. It was, it was, thank you. I appreciate that. Our DPS employees, I know that was discussed, but I have a new teenage driver who's on his permit, and it was great to get him out. I want to teach him about driving in the winter. But I was thinking that we would have some roads that we couldn't go on, but they were clear, so, in my area at least. So I would like to say thank you to them. And just kind of plugging some events, I know the mayor talked about this, the blood drive. I always put them on my council page. But there is a cool contest going on that I saw, and I shared it myself, between the police and fire. So it looks like if you're donating, you can select police or fire. And they get a really cool trophy and bragging rights, right, gentlemen? I think that's what it is. So I'll be signing up as well, too, if they'll take my blood. And I look forward to the game, the, I want to say the Wings game, but the Hockey Night in Westland. Also, too, a reminder for the dog park survey. So I did share this out on my Facebook, but again, we just don't really know what this dog park is going to look like. So I'll share it out again to have the surveys shared out to see if we can get some more participation, because the more participation we get, the more feedback we get. So Kyle has, I've talked to him about it, and Kyle has some great ideas as well. And I guess to wrap up, so if you're watching the Super Bowl, I'll say, go Rams. I don't know if anyone else wants the Rams to win. And wishing everyone a safe few weeks. God bless and be kind to each other.
Thank you. Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. I'll start by congratulating all the appointees on their reappointments tonight, and thank you for your service. Some of those are some pretty long terms, so I hope you stick around and looking forward to see what you guys bring forward. And I also want to comment on the meeting on Saturday. It was a really good meeting. Actually, for the first time since I've been on council, we were able to just sit down. And what we did was we went up and down the line two or three times, and each council member shared a couple of ideas each time. And not all of those, you know, made the top priority list, but, you know, I didn't hear any disagreement from any of the council members. Every single one of the council members gave some really good ideas. And, you know, no matter what happens with this ARPA money, you know, I hope we can get that list together, and over the next two to three years, if we can tackle some of those out, because I know, God bow, we all had good ideas that weren't suggested otherwise. So I'd really like to see us get that list together and see what we can get accomplished on our own. The only other thing I want to talk about tonight is, was mentioned, that citizens' comments about the resolution for bringing the neighborhood into the Wayne Westland School District, that's really significant. And I don't know if that's ever been brought forward to the city council before. I'm happy to support it, but if the council does the resolution and passes it, that doesn't mean, you know, really much of anything other than support. So it would be, I'm actually not sure how that would go, but I'm happy to do more research on that. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. Well, I'll continue the trend here and thank Ralph and Gretchen and John and Bob for, thanking them for continuing to serve on those boards and commissions that they serve on. They all do a great job. I know Bob Forsakian's been on the LDFA forever practically. And, but it's all important work, and again, thank you and congratulations on being reappointed. The only other thing I had this evening was, on the consent calendar, there were two items that kind of just got blown past, one of which is we approved utility financial solutions for our water rate study, which is critical in helping the city determine what the water rates are going to be during the budget time. And the other one was we approved Maximus Consulting Service for the cost allocation plan. And again, this is, you know, we used Maximus in the past. Hopefully, this time we'll follow more of their recommendations than what we did in the past as far as doing the cost allocations. And both of these items are critical pieces of the overall budget that we'll see April 1st. So that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Pro-Tim, Londo?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As was stated, we did have a little bit of a lighter agenda, but as Councilman Godbout said, we did have some good things on there. One I wanted to address as well was the school resource officer. It's more important than ever to have an officer in the schools. It's always good to have an officer in the schools, but now more than ever, and our officers do a great job in the schools in not only keeping everybody in line, but providing mentorship. I mean, I believe Officer Donald's even a coach there. So thank you to the chief for bringing that forward again. Also, hats off to the DPS team for their efforts in battling the recent snowstorm. And, you know, as everybody knows, when it's real cold out there, not only are they battling the snow, but they're battling water breaks. So I saw them out in my neighborhood as well, so they work double duty. I'll agree. I thank everyone for their time and dedication on Saturday for the study session regarding the American Recovery Act dollars. We were there about four or five hours, and again, while there might have been some disagreements, everyone was really professional. We engaged the public as well. I thought that was a good touch to let them jump in, kind of in the middle of the meeting, with some ideas, and then obviously hear from them near the end. This is really the first bite at the apple. I'm sure we're going to have a lot more discussion on that as the time comes. Congratulations to Ralph, Gretchen, John, and Robert Forsakian, who were reappointed to boards and commissions tonight. You know, it's always great to see people involved and people that stay involved in our community. If anybody knows anybody, whether you're watching at home or anybody in the audience that wants to serve, you can go to our website, cityofwestland.com, to find out more information about serving on a board. And then it was already discussed about Marshall as well. There's, we're still a long ways to go. We did have a study session, and the city hasn't made any commitments up to this point other than exploring the possibility right now. Well, you know, there is a tour coming up with separate tours with the city council. We're going to tour the City of Southgate's facility, their YMCA. That's probably one of the most up-to-date, modern YMCA locations going right now. So if anybody wants to do more research on that, we're going to take a look at that. I think I'm going on Wednesday to take a look at that. So I'm looking forward to seeing that and seeing what type of programming and hear from the residents that are actually attending there. But again, a lot more information to come in the future, and I thank everybody for their time for coming out tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to begin this evening by thanking Councilman Godbout for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and congratulate Gretchen, Ralph, and John for your reappointments. And also, thank you for your futures, or, excuse me, your past service, and thank you for your future service. It's very much needed and very much appreciated. Also like to congratulate the students that were here today by leading a good example, being young leaders in our community. So we can all learn a couple of things from them, I'm sure. So hats off to them. And last, I'll just kind of touch on real quick the study session everybody else has. I'm really thankful that everybody enjoyed that. When we sat down and we wanted to figure out how to have a really immersive and participative discussion through this, it was really adamant that we found a way to engage the council past their point of their comfort zone. We really wanted to get you out there and really hear what you and the residents had to say. And the exercise that we use is kind of a standard brainstorming exercise, and then really making it uncomfortable and not letting you pick, but just two at a time. And there is a reason for that, and the exercise was to let's really funnel up the most important things that we agree on. So as my colleagues have said, this is not the first time, it's probably not the first one we're going to do. This is going to be a process, but this allowed us to really put some priority in the things we know that we really need to do now, and the administration's working on those and getting us some figures. And then we'll take a look at that and then take another swing at it, you know, and figure out what's the most equitable and smartest spend of that funds and what really makes the most amount of sense. So I'm thankful everybody enjoyed it. I know I enjoyed it. It was time very well spent. And I thank you all for your level of participation. It was very much appreciated. And all of, any of you that did, a few of you that did come out, thank you for coming out as well. And Mayor, again, when you talk to, next time you talk to Plant Moran, please extend my thanks again. I appreciate their professionalism and their ability to facilitate that meeting for us. So thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?